We're going to start the meeting and we're going to start with Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I take a moment of silence, please? Roll call, Corinne. Counselor Galbraith?
Here.
Counselor Heising?
Here.
Counselor Simon?
Here.
Counselor Tirina?
Here.
Counselor Schneider?
Here.
Counselor President Chamberlain?
Here.
We have six members present. We have a forum. Thank you. Counsel has had time to review the prior meeting minutes. A discussion. Can we have a movement, please?
I will make a motion. We approve those or accept them?
I'll second. Motion to approve the prior meeting minutes moved by Counsel Heising and seconded by Counsel Galbraith. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Next, we are going to need to go into our joint meeting with our city council and our Clinton township. Welcome to our meeting tonight. I think we need a motion to go into before we do roll call or do we do roll call first? Let's start with a roll call. Counsel Galbraith?
Here.
Counsel Heising?
Here.
Counsel Simon?
Here.
Counsel Tirina?
Here.
Counsel Schneider?
Here.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Here.
Trustee Height?
Here.
Trustee Fry?
Here.
We have seven members present. We have a forum. Great. Guess we're going to make a motion or look for a motion to appoint Council President Chamberlain and Trustee Fry to the Wasean Union Cemetery Board again. Is that a two-year term or a four-year term?
For life.
For life?
I'm not sure how long it is.
I can't remember either. I think it's a four. Is it two? Motion to appoint Council President Chamberlain and Trustee Fry to the Wasean Union Cemetery Board moved by Trustee Height and seconded by Counsel Tirina. Any discussion? Trustee Height?
Yes.
Counsel Tirina?
Yes.
Counsel or Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Counsel Galbraith?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Simon?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Seven aces, motion carries. Okay. We have nothing else on the agenda. Do you have anything to move forward?
Rick Fry is running for office. Maybe you want to say a few things before we adjourn.
Trustee Ivan Heising, running for the same position. Oh, I can speak for him.
Ooh, let's have a debate.
But I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Thank you, Ivan.
I'll second the motion.
Motion to adjourn the annual joint meeting moved by Trustee Height and seconded by Counsel President Chamberlain. Any discussion? Trustee Height?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Counsel Galbraith?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Simon?
Yes.
Counsel Tirina?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Seven aces, motion carries. Thank you, guys, for coming. We appreciate it. Okay. We have a few things on our individuals wishing to meet address counsel. First, we have Karen Pennington from the Health Department on tobacco prevention.
Would you like me over here?
Yes. Anywhere that you can be seen by everyone.
Okay, great. Yes, my name is Karen Pennington. I work for the Fulton County Health Department. It's been about two years since I've addressed counsel. We have a tobacco grant through ODH. And two years ago, I was talking about tobacco retail licensing with the group and looking at having implementing that in Fulton County. Since that time, in January of 2024, tobacco preemption occurred, which made it illegal for us to pursue individual tobacco licensing, something that is greater than what the state of Ohio has. So at this point, that we are not looking at doing that anymore. But I did want to make you aware of our tobacco compliance checks. So we sent law enforcement into each community and had an underage purchaser attempt to purchase tobacco. This is something that we have done the last several years through the tobacco grant. And happy to report that there were no sales in Wasean, there were no sales in Fulton County. So that's awesome. That is something that hasn't happened in all the years that we were doing that. I am providing you with the 2024 compliance check reports that we have. There's just information. They look at the pricing. And we've also done tobacco store audits. Also, this information is here. The purpose of that is to see the advertising that is happening with tobacco products. And we did, this was done in the fall of this past year. Compliance checks have been completed for 2025 in the last couple of weeks for the county. So I will get that information to you. But we look at where advertisements are, and 29% of the advertisements are at eye level for youth. And that's, you know, something that we don't want because we don't want to entice our youth to be purchasing. 76% of our retailers do sell tobacco products for under a dollar. Those are those Swisher Sweets that make it very easy for youth to purchase those. And about 66% of our stores are selling e-cigarette vape products. Just as a side note, we did a youth status report in the past year. And we are seeing that the majority of our youth, like, I think our youth are at like 1% or 2% for purchasing or using vape products. So that's awesome for our county. We're very impressed by that and excited that the numbers continue to go down. So just an update on that information. Do you have any questions? We're doing good work, so we just want to keep doing it. So thank you for-
You never said this word, "cigarellos."
You've never seen cigarellos?
Well, I didn't know that. I've never heard of it, so.
You've heard of like the Swisher Sweets are considered cigarellos. So yes. Yeah, you'll see that on the package as well.
Does tobacco sales for kids seem to be dropping?
Well, you have to be 21 to purchase, so nobody should be purchasing. But we are seeing the anecdotal and our surveys are showing that less are using. So yeah. Marijuana is another issue. That's not something our grant covers, but we are hearing anecdotally that kids aren't considering a big deal to be using marijuana. If we're going to legalize it in the state, it's not a big deal. Yeah, yes. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Next, I would like our personnel, I know you guys hate doing this, to come on up real quick. I do have a proclamation. If you'd like to come up, I'd appreciate it. No, they don't. Come on, Sean. As much as you guys hate standing up here, we love appreciating you. So, okay. This is EMS week, and I have a proclamation for them. And it is to designate the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, whereas the member of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, whereas emergency medical services fill healthcare gaps by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, they engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continue in education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services provided by designating the Emergency Medical Service Week now. Therefore, I, Kathy Huner, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through the 21st, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Thank you so very much. Okay. You guys want to come on up and tell thank you? Thank you. I really appreciate that. Did you need some EMS for that?
I did, yeah.
Thank you. Well, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming.
Have a good night. Now they can go have dinner. All right. This is not on the agenda, but we are going to add it to, just for those who didn't know. Due to cross-communication, we do have Billy Myers here that would like to speak to council about new legislation on our golf carts. So Bill, if you want to come up and talk with them, go on ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Huner and council. Humoring me and letting me have a few moments. If you don't know, I'm nervous because I do a lot of talking, but I'm not good at this one. So anyway, so what caught my attention and why I wanted to meet with you was because in the Northwest Signal, on April the 8th, an article came out that said the council approved an amendment to the ordinance on inspections for slow-moving vehicles. Under the new rule, inspections conducted before March 1 will incur a reduced fee of $10, while inspections after that date will be charged $50. So that's where I kind of started with this second round. I was actually here back in October. I think it was October-ish, somewhere in that timeframe. Because I had been out of town, and when I got back to town, I heard, I was told, that a gentleman who has a gator like mine had been stopped by the police and told that he was out of compliance and that he would be atticated if he was caught driving his gator again. So I thought, well, I need to go to the council and find out what's going on. So I came, and I was asked to speak with the, I believe it's a safety committee as opposed to speaking to the full council. So I did that, and we had a fairly lengthy discussion in which a lot of information about the gator in particular, because that's what I particularly have. We discussed and reasons for having inspections on these vehicles that have been inspected initially, which I have my first inspection that I received in October the 28th of 2022. That was an inspection that qualified that vehicle for licensing by the state of Ohio. So we discussed in that discussion about the reason why, if it had been approved and was licensed by the state, and if I'm paying for my license by the state as other vehicles are, why am I subjected to another inspection and fee for that inspection when other vehicles are not? So we had a lot of discussion around that and whether or not we should handle those kinds of things because, as I understood, the council's concern was that some people who have non-traditional vehicles that are licensed, they take them to the sand dunes or something, and they come home and they take off safety equipment and things like that. And so that's why they felt the need for the inspection. I still don't understand that because I would think that our police force would be well-qualified to handle those just like they do the vehicles that I see around town without turn signals because they have bulbs burn out or headlights burn out and those kinds of things. So I would think they would follow the same protocol with the non-traditional vehicles as they do traditional vehicles, for sake of better terminology. Anyway, as soon as I heard that, I put my gator on the trailer because I didn't want to drive it illegally, and I drove it down and had it inspected, and I paid $50, at which point in time, and I have the receipt here for that, but at that point in time, the police that did the inspection said, "Well, you have a sticker in your window, don't you?" And I said, "Yes." And he said, "Well, we're not going to issue another one because the stickers we have, the ink, don't stay on them anyway, so you can't tell the date on them." I said, "Okay." So anyway, so that's kind of how we handled that. And but I did come to the council meeting because I just don't understand the logic of that inspection when it has been inspected once, just as automobiles have been inspected and passed. So our traditional automobiles have been inspected and passed. But at the end of that meeting, I was asked, "So what would you say if we said it had to be inspected, but we didn't charge any fee for it, and we only charged a fee for those who failed to get it inspected and we caught driving?" I said, "Well, it's not really what I would desire because I don't see the reason for having to even remember to get an inspection when I don't get a notice of inspection, an annual notice of inspection, and I'm paying an annual license fee for the vehicle to the state of Ohio." So while I still don't understand that part, I said, "I suppose that's better than having to pay $50 for an inspection every year." Anyway, so after that meeting, that was, of course, the end of that understanding, my understanding, and then I found the notice in the newspaper and came by and was given a nice copy of the, and I'm sorry, I can't call your name right off. Apologize for that. I do have it in my phone, though.
Corinne.
Corinne, yes. Thank you, thank you. Corinne provided me a copy of the ordinance. So I do have a copy of the ordinance now, and it says that it does apply to a low-speed vehicle, an underspeed vehicle, a utility vehicle, or a mini truck that has been inspected, registered, and titled prior to the effective date of this chapter. And I think the effective date, I guess, would be April the 7th of 2025, which was when this was passed. I'm supposing that's the effective date. Anyway, so I have some question because I don't know really where I fall. I paid in October. I paid a $50 fee. I don't know how long that's good for or when that's good for. Was that good for the future $50 or was that good for the past $50? I don't know. Well, the future one would be a $10 one.
If it's done within that window?
Right.
Which window?
January 1 to March 1, I think it was, Brandon, was it?
Yeah, February, yeah, 28th, before March 1st.
So January 1 to February 28th, if you re-register in that window, I think it's how much?
$10.
$10.
Okay. So the $50 one that I did is only good from October to January. Is that right? I'm not sure I understand that.
I would go with, my interpretation of the legislation, that's a 2024 fee. Yep.
Right. Okay.
Your first initial fee.
And I suppose there was an ordinance for that as well?
Yes, that was the first ordinance that was not modified after we had our safety imposed.
Okay. So I would like to understand, really, I guess, why it changed after I left the council meeting or the subcommittee council meeting from the understanding that even though we would require an inspection, that it wouldn't cost anything unless I failed to get it inspected. I would like to understand that.
Yeah, I think after we had talked, I don't really remember as much detail as you do as far as us saying, "Oh, yeah, you know, we could eliminate the fee."
It is a possibility.
Yeah. So but after talking to Chief Chittenden and the time that he's having his guys out there to inspect the vehicles and that type of stuff, we were like, "Well, let's try and just do a minimal cost to the people that are coming back before March 1st," and that's where the $10 came from.
Okay. So another question that I have is, are you taking steps to address traditional vehicles that have failures with required safety equipment such as turn signals, headlights?
Yeah.
What are you doing with those?
Those are covered under the Ohio Revised Code at this point for as far as the violations. This, what you're dealing with is something fairly new. And I don't know if there's any real require, yeah.
And I think, you know, even the story that you had started with, where your friend got pulled over and was like, "Hey, if you don't get the sticker, then you're not in compliance, and then I'll have to..." So he got grace on that time, correct?
He was, that was a warning.
Right. And so it's the same, I think that precaution is the same that they use for traditional vehicles, where if you have a brake light out or a turn signal out, you could get pulled over and they'd say, "Hey, did you know that you had a brake light out?" It's like, "Oh, no, I can't see when I'm braking, so thank you for telling me, officer," whatever. And so they would get grace for that. And so I think it's pretty much the same way the precautions that we're taking with the traditional vehicles is pulling them over and saying, "Hey, you're not in code." And the officer can either choose to give you a ticket or give you grace.
So why would we treat them differently? They're both licensed by the state of Ohio. So why don't you have them do an annual inspection as well to make sure that they are meeting all the safety requirements and qualifications?
Well, I guess, for me, it's like this state can determine that. And for this ordinance specific that you're addressing is not to the state. This is Wasean-specific. And so when we passed this, it was kind of like looking at it, "We're going to let it fly for a year and see how it goes and see if people are actually getting their stickers and staying within the law and not driving on 35 miles per hour roads, not driving on shoop, and different things like that," because you can never drive on shoop. And so.
No, sir.
Because it's 35 miles an hour.
No, that's a state.
That is a state route.
That's a state route.
You can't drive in a county route at 55 mile an hour. You cannot drive on those roads with those vehicles.
So where does it say in the ordinance that I can't drive my gator, which is capable of driving at 50 miles an hour? I cannot drive it on 35 mile an hour streets.
So that transcends Wasean's code, and that goes to state because that's a state road.
Yes. And the state law says you will not drive them on 55, out in the county or highway, speeds above 35 mile an hour, or 25 or 30.
Yeah, 35 and above.
But then it's an Ohio Revised Code, and there's a lot of misconceptions that once they get these registered through the state, they have a license plate, and they can drive on any freeway out there. That's incorrect. The reason why they do this, the reason why Ohio started doing this to a point is because when you go to Michigan, they issue license because they have roadside trails, they have the snowmobile trails they can run in the summer, and that's how they identify them when they pull them over or they do something wrong up there. So in order to do that, to be legal up there, they were allowing them to do it here, license them to take them basically up there. Then everybody, that became an open door. Everybody thinks that they can drive them on back roads, state highways, or wherever because their vehicles are capable of doing the speed limit.
Okay. But that really isn't even my question. My question's about in the city and on the city streets and the requirement of the inspection in the city that is different than the requirement for other automobiles that drive within the city.
Yeah, as one decision-maker, I can tell you that it was a chance for us to lay eyes on what I describe as a non-conforming vehicle, for us to say, "Is it still safe to be on the road?" It was just that once-a-year chance for our law enforcement folks to say, "Yes, it's safe to be on the road." Because when I voted in favor of it, I was concerned about folks driving those vehicles and then having accidents with our more traditional automobiles. So I was concerned about safety. And when the legislation came out that once a year, our law enforcement folks are going to lay eyes on that non-conforming or non-traditional to make sure it is still safe, that reassured me that, okay, at least once a year, law enforcement folks are going to say they're as safe as they can be. So that's why I voted in favor of it, yeah.
And those that were in the past going up into Michigan and tearing them apart and bringing them back, or even out in the county roads, if they had the sticker from Wasean and they were driving out there, they would say, "Well, we got it, you know, inspected in Wasean." But then they'd go and they'd take things off, and it's like, "No, that's only for Wasean. It's not for the other roads." And it's just a matter of learning that this is just for this in the streets, not on a, you know, state highway or anything that's 35 miles an hour. But because it's new, we, you know, it's just a matter of everybody learning the laws just like anything else that's new with the law. But I think when they come back in and they're not modified, someone takes some seat belts out and takes a backseat out or something like that, and they're going to drive from A to B, yeah, we have police, but what if the police didn't catch them? They still got inspected before, but they are, you know, that's some things that they do with these where with cars, you don't see them taking, you know, some of that stuff out. But yeah, you're right, their blinkers work. I've seen cars where the thing is ripped off, and that is up to the police to take care of. But this is just something that we want to make sure that when you got kids in them and you're driving down the road, they are a smaller vehicle, you know, they're not, I don't want to say.
Traditional.
Yeah, traditional. We just want them to be safe because it is new. And some people didn't want it, some people did, and we just want to make it as safe as possible. But I think you fell into, Billy, that you came in in October and got the $50 fee to get yours inspected, and then we started to do this, revamp it, because you did bring it forward. Why do I have to pay another 50? So I think the $10 was to get the officer to call them in, bring them in, have them inspected because they're out on the road who does the inspection, and the stickers that obviously aren't keeping the, you know, they're going to have to get different stickers or registrations or whatever for new registrations, whatever. I think that's what the $10 ended up being. I don't remember all of the discussion.
We're getting new stickers. So I thought, yeah, we're getting new stickers so that way the ink wouldn't come off and that type of stuff.
It was just, and also, you know, just to make sure that they come in and they do it. I think if there's no fee, you're going to, I don't know if they'll come in and do it or not.
Yeah.
I would like to say I appreciate that you would like to follow the rules and the guidelines that were put forth. So, you know, I appreciate your focus on wanting to do that. I always have a little bit of a, maybe a confusion about the difference between what he is presenting and an actual golf cart.
They're built different. They're bigger engines.
But what the guidelines are between the two of them, I feel like, is it all the same?
Our legislation.
Season is the same.
Yeah, season is the same.
But he's allowed to do things outside of the city that a golf cart is not? Or it's all grouped the same?
No, it's all grouped the same, even in state.
I'm not on safety and code, so I'm not on all of those details.
Well, and really, I'm not trying to address anything outside of the city, anyway. I'm just addressing what is in the city because I see a pretty good variance in how we're being treated or how I'm being treated from those who drive other vehicles. I mean, I have traditional vehicles as well, but I never get inspected. It's up to me to keep up with my taillights and my headlights and my brakes and my safety equipment and my seat belts and all of those things. And I don't know why we don't hold people accountable for the responsible things for which they're supposed to do instead of find ways to tax people additionally and to find other ways to try to, I guess, be bureaucratic with something that I think should be handled the same. So I'm very disappointed that the council took that choice and made that decision. And I realize that I certainly am not in a position or cannot fight City Hall, and I understand that, but I am very disappointed. So thank you for your time.
I might be dating myself a little bit, Mayor, but do you remember back in the day where we had inspection stickers on vehicles? Do you guys even remember that?
Years and years ago.
I don't remember that.
But it's not just those. I mean, what for the other vehicles that need to be inspected that used to go to the garage, and they used to go down at the garage years ago? There was just other.
I remember coming up and getting a biker, a bike sticker.
Oh, bicycles, yeah.
When we were kids, it was a buck or something.
Yeah. That, that was easier for when they got stolen and you had a license, but that was by choice.
Right.
Mr. Meyer, right? Is it Mr.? Mr. Meyer, you, you made one comment earlier about reminding yourself to come in and get the registration done. Do you, did you, did you experience a, a law enforcement officer contact you to remind you or did you receive notice in the mail? Just something you were.
I saw it in the newspaper.
Okay.
No, I heard it. I heard about a friend of mine who was stopped and given a warning. That's why I came in to get my.
I don't know, maybe, maybe we can. Yeah, that's a reminder.
Yeah.
One of the reasons I was not a fan of approving them in the first place is because I felt like our law enforcement has better things to do than all the minutia of, you know, dealing with all of that. So to me, you know, I, I mean, I'm glad that people find joy in driving them around and, but, you know, we can't just say have at it also. You know, there has to be some kind of, you know, safety measures in place and what those are, you know, is up to safety and code, but, you know.
Yeah, because when, so when I first presented it, it was, uh, shot down. So then I had to go back to safety and code, figure out how I can make it happen and then bring it back again. Because I wanted golf carts, it's like people wanted to drive them, people were already driving them illegally. So how do we make it legal? And go on, or do you have a thought on that?
Well, I, I would like to speak again, but I didn't want to interrupt you.
Oh, appreciate that. So, so then I said, okay, well, let's figure out how to make it legal and make it a win-win for everybody and, um, and make it sustainable. And so, uh, ten dollars in my mind is a sustainable fee. It's, you know, two coffees. And so I thought if we were able to do that, it's got a good thing, but I think the reminder needs to be sent out for sure.
That way, those folks can take advantage of that window.
Exactly. Yeah, because then it's like, oh, I didn't know, nobody notified me and now I have to pay fifty bucks.
We just put it into legislation, so we really didn't have, and in February, we, it, it was the end of the, the date.
Yeah.
And then we said, we, you know, the renewal, we took what he said instead of another, you know, fifty dollars or whatever, let's knock it down. And we did discuss not paying and then I think that's where the fee, the ten dollars was for, you know, just bringing the officer in to do this.
And the sticker, everything else.
Yeah, it was just a ten dollars.
Yeah, for real, yeah.
More or less.
May I say one more thing, please?
Yeah.
I, I guess I would add to, to that simply because the, the subject of golf carts has risen to the top. I, I'm not sure why the city would authorize golf carts on the city streets anyway. They are, they are in no way equipped, uh, for city driving. And so it, I, I almost feel offended that my, my Gator is put in the same category as a golf cart. When my, when my Gator is larger than a Mini Cooper, it's lit better than a Mini Cooper, uh, that are perfectly legal and require no inspections whatsoever. And I feel probably is just as safer, safer than a Mini Cooper, absent my, absent maybe airbags, if they have airbags in them. But anyway, I just, I just have to say that because.
I didn't mean to offend you about the golf cart.
No, I'm just surprised that, I, I was surprised that the city would even allow that because they are not in any way equipped to, to be on city streets.
But there's capability of them being equipped almost, yeah.
There's just, there's a wide variety of.
Anything to make something meet the law. But it doesn't mean it meets the spirit of the law.
Correct.
But that being a separate legislation for each, you know, it's too much, but you know.
But if we're talking about vehicles that are not designed for road purpose, that's, and that's why the state lumped them in.
Yeah. So we pulled from the state and said, okay, this is how the state structured it, so we'll follow suit. And that's where we ended up with this. Yeah.
Yeah, we can't go less than the state law. Villages and cities can go above the state law, make it tighter, but you can't go less. All we did was make regulations within our little city of Wasean to make sure that they are, you know, done correctly and, and they're out on the streets correctly.
Just for clarification, there was an ordinance that said fifty dollars annually? There was an actual ordinance?
Yes, that was.
I've never seen it and that's the reason why I ask.
And then when you came to talk to us, then we changed it based upon our discussion.
It's still fifty after February twenty-eighth, right?
Correct, yes, it's still fifty for the new or, um, those that don't come before March first or February twenty-eighth.
First for the initial, initial investigation, the renewal is ten dollars as long as you keep it in the window.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Billy. Okay. Department heads.
Keith.
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 Thank you.
Not much update since Thursday. Didn't want to bring your attention to the, uh, legislation first reading. Working with the, um, Wasean Rotary and Troy Armstrong and Wasean Schools to apply for a Nature Works grant. This came about, uh, just Thursday afternoon. We're trying to get it out. The deadline is June second to apply for this. It's for a twenty thousand dollar grant, looking to use that money to pay for a portion of the replacement of playground equipment at Rotary Park. It'll be awarded sometime in late twenty twenty-five, I believe November is when they will announce it.
Any match to it, Keith, the job, any match to it?
There's a, at least twenty-five percent match, but with it only being twenty thousand, it's going to be more like a, they're going to pay twenty-five percent and we will come up with the rest between Rotary and the city to cover the cost. But it, it will alleviate probably twenty-five percent of the cost for the replacement of the equipment.
And it's specifically for the equipment at Rotary Park?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what this is for.
Okay. Any other questions for Keith? Tom?
I really don't have much to report, working on a bunch of things for various department heads and our chief executive. I will shame report that the trails are, so the Firecracker five K was held on Thursday last week. And I took the trails for a spin in the morning to make sure they were up to snuff and they were in mint condition.
The tanks didn't tear them up back there then?
Not that I saw. A few trees seem to be displaced, uh, but the trails themselves seemed okay. Uh, but seriously, the trails are in good condition. I'm assuming their runners said they had the fifty or so runners for the five K and I think it was a good, a good event. But yeah, trails are just a real, it's a crown jewel for the city, I think. They're just beautiful out there. I appreciate all the people that will still continue to work on them, keep them up and take care of them. So that's really all I have.
Okay. No, uh, speaking of that, uh, the Operation Homecoming, uh, really was a good event. The rain was bad for it, but we had two good days and they are planning on coming back next year. We're going to meet together with the group, talk about dates, times, uh, improvements. But their group loved City Wasean, they really liked it. And, um, the people, the, even the vendors out there, they ran out of food. So not that it was huge crowds, but people really liked it. Was it loud? Yes, at times, but I was out there with the high school kids from the county and they were very much in tune with what was happening. And it was a touch of history that, you know, if you can view it instead of read about it, that's the way to learn. And they were really, I was asking quite a few, how did you like it? And they all loved it, so.
My son enjoyed it and went back afterward with his metal detector and found all kinds of shells.
Did he?
So he.
Blank shells. They're blank, I do know that.
There was some unfired ones too, so, yeah.
And then this weekend, we had our bikers, um, bikes. Give me the rest.
We tried.
Huh?
We tried.
We, it, really, I was impressed, we had forty-five bike, forty-five?
Forty-five bikes along with, uh, twenty-two passengers on the twice.
Okay, and this was.
And that didn't count by wings that changed. Those guys came out and, and volunteered at the bike show, but on the actual ride, we had forty-five bikes.
It was really, it was great, it was really good. And the chicken was amazing. It was freezing, but they stuck around and you gotta love them because they, they pay to do this and then, you know. Are you trying to make that an annual event?
I am, and I know that I wasn't like on the agenda today, so I just wanted to see if I could, I just need to pick your guys' brain. I got a lot of questions, um, getting into.
Yeah, I talked to her a little bit. I think we need to kind of come together and sit down and do a sit-down group meeting.
I agree, yeah.
Discuss, um, downtown events, just what we can do.
Because I just want to clarify things with the five oh one account.
Yeah, 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 okay, yeah. We'll, we'll help you with that, but I, I can set up a time after council that we can meet. That'd be great. All right, um, let's see, I think that's it for the events downtown right now. Oh, the five K was very hot for May. I thought it was very warm and was it a twelve-year-old that came in second? I think second place.
I don't know.
And I cannot remember the name. They did very well. Um, so there was some great runners, a lot of kids this year, which was impressive. So, all right, committee reports, tree commission.
It'll be me. We met on the sixth, Tuesday morning. John Alexander, basically, he come, said that the Arbor Day events went really well. The schools enjoyed it. Both the principals thanked him before he left. Laura Camp and Kurt Stuckey also went to the Tree City Awards and we talked about getting the award. And where you talked about that? I don't remember if it was before or after this, but.
Yeah, I have the letter downstairs, but we just need the, the little thingy to go on the plaque and bring them in.
Laura's also has a couple, well, no, it's understanding it's just one.
I have that on the agenda.
Discuss where you, okay. There was a discussion about planting trees in Mittel Park, was it, we talked about in Mittel Park or across the street on the west side?
Across the street.
And we were just waiting to see what developments were going to happen at that point, so. And other than that, uh, I, we even went on to working on the urban forestry management plan.
All right, so no action?
Nope.
Let's see, so then let's move on to our first reading and this is what Keith was talking about. Uh, we have a first reading, Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash nine. It is a resolution authorizing the mayor, or her designated, to apply for a Nature Works grant for the purpose of replacing the playground equipment at Rotary Park Earth and declaring this an emergency.
I'll second. Motion to place resolution two thousand twenty-five dash nine on emergency reading. Moved by Council Schneider and seconded by Council Heising. Any discussion? Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Tiarina?
Yes.
Council Simon?
Yes.
Council Galbraith?
Yes.
Sixty zero, may this motion carries.
Final? Second.
Motion to place resolution two thousand twenty-five dash nine on final reading. Moved by Council Tiarina and seconded by Council Simon. Any discussion? Council Tiarina?
Yes.
Council Simon?
Yes.
Council Galbraith?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Sixty zero, may this motion carries.
Thank you.
Right away, Keith, right away.
All right, uh, we have nothing under second or third reading. Under new business to go along with the tree commission, uh, the new person to be put on the committee is Julie Wolf. And I did, uh, collaborate back and forth with Laura. So, um, I need, just need a motion from council to, uh, accept that appointment.
I'll do it.
I'll second.
Um, question, I just wondered with all the discussion we had about finding people within the city limits or without. She's within. Well, she is within, okay, I just was curious. Welcome to her.
Laura isn't going to let up until she finds somebody.
She's doing a good job.
Yes.
Motion to approve the mayor's appointments to various boards and committees. Moved by Council Simon and seconded by Council Tiarina. Any discussion? Council Simon?
Yes.
Council Tiarina?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Galbraith?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Chamberlain?
Good luck, Julie.
Sixty zero, may this motion carries. Okay, anything I know of assistance at all?
Okay, then we just need a motion to approve the bills.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion to approve the pay the bills as presented, moved by Council Schneider and seconded by Council Simon. Any discussion? Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Simon?
Yes.
Council Tiarina?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Galbraith?
Yes.
Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Sixty zero, may this motion carries. Okay, motion for adjournment, please?
I'll make that motion. Second?
Motion to adjourn, moved by Council Tiarina and seconded by Council President Chamberlain. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.